I would like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the locations of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection.
The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, made in this world with the word Jesus Christ.
Tonight, we stand for Mr. Joseph Natali, an English teacher in the district from 1965 through 1991, who passed away on January 12th, 2019; for Mrs. Joan Gudzalski, a cook at the high school from 1976 through 2000, who passed away on February 4th, 2019; and for Mr. Don Lynch, retired detective with the Lancaster Police Department and hall monitor at the high school since September 2017, who passed away on February 5th, 2019. Okay, so we will, we have several exciting things in the agenda for this evening, exciting in terms of a Board of Education meeting, of course, but we'll start with something that's very exciting, 4.0, we'll go to presentations, and 4.1, we have a kindness presentation from Hillview Elementary, led by Mrs. Amy Moller. Mrs. Moller, should we take our seats in the front row? Very good.
Good evening, and welcome to Hillview Elementary School. Here in Lancaster, we are very fortunate to have a community made up of such close-knit, kind, and caring families. We also have school staff members who inspire our students and model positivity on a daily basis. Fortunately, this week in the Lancaster Central School District, we will celebrate the Week of Kindness with all students, staff members, family members, and community members. Throughout this week, every Lancaster school will partake in many enjoyable activities that will help others and brighten their day. The Hillview students who are onstage this evening have special advice and connections to share with all of us about the importance of being a kind person who models good character. To start us off, I will just share one brief example about the contagious kindness that exists within our school district. If you have ever called our district office, you will typically be greeted by a person on the line who will gladly help you with anything you might need. The woman on the other end of the line is Mrs. Janik, our school district clerk. She is always personable, helpful, and most importantly, kind to anyone who calls her for assistance or information. We would like to present her with this Valentine card because we appreciate everything she does for all of us in the Lancaster Central School District. Mrs. Janik, can you give a wave?
Hi, my name is Alex Palala, and here's the meaning of kindness: Share your toys, share your love, and be a good friend, and give lots of hugs.
And this Valentine is for Mr. Uteck. Mr. Uteck, can you just give a wave? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sebastian Benzamin. I am kind to my friends. Please follow the golden rule and treat others the way you want to be treated.
This Valentine is for Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher, can you just give a wave?
Hi, my name is Noah Fuqua. I am kind, and I work very hard to be the best person and friend that I can be.
This Valentine is for Mrs. Cohen. Mrs. Cohen, should I give a wave?
Hi, my name is Lila Fletcher. It is important to be kind and nice. I hope my sister and my brother always be kind.
This Valentine is for Mrs. Fletcher, Lila's mom.
Hi, my name is Anne Kosicki. Everyone needs to be kind. Never hurt other people's feelings. If there is a new person in your class, include them and ask them to sit with you. Never leave anyone out, and share everything.
This Valentine is for Mr. Jackson.
Hi, hi. My name is Jackson Kosicki. I love to be a happy person and care about my friends and how I treat them. Here is a quote from the book Wonder that I hear my teachers say all the time: When given the choice between being right or being kind, choose kind.
All right, and, oh, hold on. This Valentine is for Mrs. Metz.
Hi, my name is Allison Moberg. It is important to remember that if you have something to say that might hurt someone's feelings, do not say it. Be a kind person because kindness builds friendships, long-lasting living relationships.
That's right, and this Valentine is for Mr. Sage.
Hi, my name is Buna Bucheri. I am kind, and I like to help others. I help my family, my friends, and my teacher. I also feel that everyone should be nice to each other because kindness contagious passes on.
This Valentine is for Dr. Vallee, our superintendent.
Hi, my name is Mia Kufel. It is very important to be kind to others. If you are a good friend to others, then in return, they will be a good friend to you. Kind people make a positive impact on other people. As my dad always says, always be kind no matter what.
And this is for, Valentine is for Dr. Kufel, our Assistant Superintendent. We know where she knows where he is.
Hi, my name is Bryn Lucarelli. It feels really good to be kind and respectful to others. It makes other people feel good, too. I also think people should remember to pay it forward. Your reputation is important, and people will remember how well you treat others.
And this Valentine is for Ms. Phillips, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance. I just think it's very important to note, I want everyone here to know that, I met with these students one-on-one in my office, and they just, they just had so many positive things to say, I was just scribing along as they were talking, so everything you heard tonight came right from them, right from the students here at Hillview. So, let's give them another huge round of applause. And we are just so happy that we were able to kick off the Week to Kindness here at Hillview with all of you. Tomorrow evening, please remember, we have the Family Fun Night over at the LHS Field House from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., so we hope to see you there. Hillview friends will be wearing their blue Let Friendship Grow shirts, so you'll be able to find us easily and quickly with our shirts on. So, thank you very much, friends, great job, another big round of applause, please, for our Hillview kindness friends.
Okay, so, what a great school, and what a great bunch of young ladies and gentlemen. And I think it's important, it dawned on me, it's very important what we do as a Board of Education and as a school district, in not only setting a good example for youngsters, but also taking care of them, taking care of their academic needs, but their social and emotional needs as well, and teaching them good things. So, if, and if we take care of children, very clearly, they can take care of us. So, thank you very much for hosting us, and for your kind words, and setting a great example for we, for us adults. So, again, thank you very much, let's give them one more round of applause. Take a bow, take a bow, take a bow. And we're going to turn it over to Dr. Kufel for census data and for mental health presentation. Now, the parents of these young people, I encourage you to stay for as much as you feel the need to this evening, but I also encourage you to get home in time to do everything you need to do before bedtime. And I'll say once again, every time young people do presentations, I think their parents should take them out for a special treat, maybe ice cream or hot chocolate or something. I think that would be important. Dr. Kufel? Yeah, Dr. Isn't your wife coming? Should we have a seat again? You're not projecting anything?
I'm not projecting anything. Do you want me to sit?
By Mrs. Karen? Do you want to do mental health first?
If you need mental health, it's to mental health, and let's go back.
Okay. Yeah, you guys, I have nothing to project, but Craseman does. Is that okay? Oh, sure. I think we're going to project stuff while we're sitting here. Okay.
Hysteria.
However, Mr. Craseman and I have decided that he and I should go out for ice cream afterwards, because we have our own money and don't need to rely on our parents. So, but we are here tonight to talk to all of you about the new mental health standards that have come from New York State, and the initiative that we have started here in the district around that. So, to begin with that, we're going to start with our why, as to why we are doing it. We, obviously, we need to meet the standards, but more importantly, this is something that's good for students. The development and the maintenance of their mental health will only help them in their education as they move forward. And the state of New York has put together a guidance document and standards for us that is, goes across K-12, and was put forth and voted on in July of 2018, and it's been our job as a district to start to put together how we're going to implement that this year. Some background information. Half of all chronic mental illness starts before students are 14. So, half of the mental illness that we will see in Lancaster will start before students hit the high school. And so, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help support students prior to when they get into the high school years. Of course, when you come to mental health issues, you're dealing with things like an increased risk of suicide, increased bullying, increased risk-taking behaviors, things like that, that impact students, a student's life both inside and outside of school. Focusing on mental health and those behaviors around mental health is more effective at the younger years than it is to try and catch up later on. So, while most of those things show up before students are older, if we can catch them early on, we can help them more effectively. And lastly, regular communication and education helps to build trust within a school and within the school district, and helps to cut down on some of that stigma, and we want to make sure that kids don't feel stigmatized if they need help. So, according to the World Health Organization, mental health includes self-esteem and self-confidence, those things that we expect students to be able to do, stand up in front of their peers, talk to people, the ability to identify, express, and regulate emotions, so when we talk about mindfulness and those kinds of things, that falls into that category, the ability to set and achieve goals. We all have to do that on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, it's all part of becoming an adult, the recognition of your own creative skills, knowing what your strengths are, and being able to celebrate those for yourself, the ability to expand your knowledge and skills, which is something, obviously, we want every student to do every day here in Lancaster, the ability to feel and show empathy for each other, to know what somebody else is going through, and being able to identify with that, and the ability to create and maintain satisfying relationships, which obviously is such a huge part of life beyond just the academic things that we give them here. So, the goals of the new regulations set forth by State Ed and at all grade levels are to help students understand and maintain good mental health, so we want them to kind of get what's going on in their own heads, to decrease that stigma that we talked about before, we don't want students to feel bad about themselves if they're already having issues, and to enhance a student's ability to speak up for themselves and say, hey, I need help with this, or hey, my friend needs help with this, and to understand some of the common disorders that we find in students in the K-12 arena. Our goals as a district are to put together programs and activities that will help our students across all grade levels, and that are developmentally appropriate for students at different grade levels, to gain a better understanding of what's going on at each of the building that supports good mental health, and to create new curriculum and stronger alignment across the district. And that's something that we'll be working on, and that Andy's going to talk about a little bit right now.
Yeah. So, Karen kind of gave you the nuts and bolts as to the why we're pursuing the mental health piece, not just because it's a State Education Department mandate, but this is good practice for our kiddos. As, you know, we progress as an educational system, we're seeing more and more of our kiddos that are experiencing some issues when it comes to social, emotional learning and mental health struggles. So, this is good practice for us to put in place as a school district to meet the ever-changing needs of our kiddos. So, in thinking about how we would go forward in tackling this, what we decided to do was to put together a committee of teachers. The teachers, parents, administrators, we bring everybody together, and essentially what we're going to be doing is going through a three-phase process to tackle how we are going to implement a new curriculum across the district. So, the first thing we did is we established a subcommittee of district administrators, building administrators, health teachers, nurses, psychologists, school resource officers, our family support center, counselors, teachers from the classroom, teachers from the Special Education Department, parrots, coaches, anybody who has different interactions with children, because sometimes some of the issues that kids might be dealing with in a classroom might be different than what kids might be dealing with on the athletic field, or at home, or things like that. So, we're trying to cast a really wide net of the types of people that we are trying to get to sit on the committee. Instead of going out and trying to purchase a one-size-fits-all, a typical boxed program, I guess if you will, to try to meet the needs of our kids, we voted against that idea. We said, you know what, that's, that's not what's in the best interest of Lancaster, that's not what's in the best interest of our kids. But to collectively put the minds together of all the teachers and the administrators and all the stakeholders from the district together, and bring them all into a room, and have everybody working together, those boots on the ground that are working with those kids every day, who better to develop that curriculum than the folks who are doing it right here? And that was the thought process behind it, and there's a lot of good things that are going on in the district right now, that instead of just saying, you know what, we're going to bring in something different, let's see if we can maximize what we're already doing, let's see if we can try to find new ways to reach students. So, the first phase is an audit process, where essentially now, we're going to look at the standards, see where in each of the different grade level bands, and I'll talk about those in a second, how are we already meeting these standards with the activities and different programs that we have in place now? And then where we have areas where we're not seeing a spot where we're meeting these standards, identify that and say, what do we need to put in there, what types of programs and pieces can we put into that place, so that we can meet the needs for those kiddos with that standard? After that audit piece is completed, we find out what we're doing well, we find out where we need to plug some holes and fill in some gaps, let's map out what that curriculum is going to look like. And again, bringing the teachers together from the different grade level bands, and saying, what are the different programs and activities that we can put into place to meet the needs for our kiddos when it comes to mental health and social, emotional learning? And then when all of that mapping piece is done, is to create that finalized curriculum document that says, this is what we are doing K-12 across the 4K-3 schools, William Street, the middle school, and the high school. So, this is the sketch of what that plan is going to, that's the sketch of what the plan looks like. So, to kind of give you a preview as to what these standards are, and some of the work that the committee is going to be taking on, the standards are broken down into three different subcomponents: self-management, relationship, and resource management. And within each of those components, the skill sets and the standards are broken down into four grade level bands. Early elementary, which according to the state is K-2, we are looking at that from a K-3 perspective, because our buildings are K-3. Late elementary, 4 to 6. Intermediate, which would be our middle school level, which would be grade 7 and 8, and then the commencement level, which is 9 through 12. So, to kind of give you an example as to what these grade level bands look like and what the standards look like, here's an example up front. Looking at self-management, how do students develop a self-awareness and self-management for skills for essential mental health? So, essentially, if you look across where it says outline, you'll see early elementary, late elementary, intermediate, and commencement. As you look across, you'll see different standards within those grade level bands. So, what the teachers and the stakeholder groups are going to be doing is taking a look at those standards, unpack those standards first, find out exactly what those standards mean to them, and what they mean to the Lancaster Central Schools, and then say, what are the different programs, what are the different activities, what are the different things that we have in place, or what are the different things that we may be needing to add, so that we're meeting these educational standards, again, for the best interest of our kiddos here in Lancaster? So, the committee has been formed. We've had over 65 people that had expressed interest. Our committee did have their first meeting today, where we had 38, 38 people sitting on the committee, a wide variety stakeholder of groups from across the different, across the district, representing all of those different grade level bands. So, what's going to be happening now, going forward, is after we had this first initial meeting today, we did some standard unpacking activities, and we had some discussions around some of the things that are going on in, in the district currently, some of the things that we may be looking at down the road. We talked about things like, you know, the mindfulness, and mindfulness curriculum, and some of the mindfulness pieces that are already existing in, in classrooms across the district. We talked about Peace Bus, and we talked about a variety of different positive activities and programs that are currently taking place in the district, and things that we might add going forward. So, what will happen now is the subcommittees are going to break up, and they're, we're going to go through Phase 1 of the process, which will take us up to about spring break. After Phase 1 is complete, we're going to bring the entire band back together out of the subcommittees, revisit, and then we're going to move into Phase 2. So, over the course of the rest of the school year, and perhaps maybe even into the summertime, we'll be looking at putting this entire document together. So, in essence, that's it. Not as fun as the kids, I'm sorry. We tried. No flowers, no handouts, very, very sorry. Does anybody have any questions? Fantastic.
I'd like to make a comment. I mean, I, I think this is from the state, this has been a long time coming. I think for quite a while, they put sort of the academics and the educational form in terms of academia ahead of social, emotional learning and wellness, and now they've finally come out formally with something to tell districts that, this is one of the, you know, this is one of the mandates I firmly believe in. When the mandates came out from, from our district and from someone who's involved in education from, with two different districts, I looked at it and said, I think Lancaster is, again, ahead of the curve in terms of already having initiatives and activities in place without having a formal curriculum. So, I think this is a, an obvious next step, right, and a great next step to more formalize this. I guess my question would be, is our, is our vision to establish a curriculum that we put into place that's, that's clearly implemented, or is it going to be at the discretion of the building principals, or is that an ever-evolving process? How do, how do you see this 10 years down the road? Because between now and those 10 years, there's going to be a lot of different curveballs that are thrown to us by the state, and we do not react to those initiatives or those mandates. We have this as a common thread throughout, no matter what, but what is our vision specifically in terms of formalizing this?
I was, I guess the first thing I would say is it would be something that would be ever-evolving. As, as needs of our kids change from year to year, you know, you think to the kids that you may have taught five years ago to the kids that you teach now, obviously, the needs of those kids are ever going to be changing. One of the pieces that we said to the committee today is that once the, the final document is, is put together and finalized annually, this would be something that would be reviewed by, obviously, a smaller group of stakeholders, but again, from, you know, across the district, so that, you know, we're, we're constantly looking back and using it as, as a tool in, in our classrooms, whether it's PE, general ed, special ed, whatever the case is, out on the athletic fields, it's something that's constantly evolving and being looked at and done.
But to that point, everything will be in a written document, and there will be a curriculum map, so teachers understand that while some of these things have been things that we've been doing all along, whether formally or informally, now they're the things that we're expecting to make sure to meet those standards, and if then those things aren't working for us anymore, then we can bring that back up to those other meetings. Anybody else have questions?
So, well, thank you very much for the presentation. I would also like to point out and remind people that a couple of meetings back, we had a lady who came and spoke and asked about the, the social, emotional learning and wellness of our district, and she had made some suggestions which had to do with mindfulness and, and brief activities which could make an impact. And this is, is not a response to that, but almost an acknowledgement of that question, and we truly do listen to the community when they come and, and ask us of things. So, this, I think, is a timely presentation, but it's, it's ultimately very important, has been important, and will continue to, to be important. I just think it's another notch in Lancaster's hat that the state has come out with something, and we're already doing these things. So, hats off to you, thank you very much for the presentation and the information, and we look forward to all the good news to come.
all the good news to come.
All right, a couple... Good evening. Couple of quick ones, just to once again acknowledge Hillview, the wonderful building it is, the wonderful job the students did and, and the week of kindness that is, is upon us. Each and every one of our buildings has exciting things going on from today all the way through to Friday, including Family Fun Night, as Mrs. Muller alluded to. So thanks to the community, thanks to the teachers, the students, the administrators, the staff for making that week a reality for our community. Andy and Karen, thank you for following the youngsters and switching spots with me very quickly. No, I'm kidding. No, great, great job. And there was, there was an energy, they had their first meeting today and they did a great job constructing that meeting and there was a fantastic group of people in that room comprised of just the stakeholders, as they said, teachers, support staff, administrators, counselors. It was an, an energy in that room when I stopped by and, and they're excited to see what's going to come of that. So that being said, the census data and enrollment projections for 2019, 2020. So I'll start off with a, a little bit of a history in terms of where we've been with enrollment projection. Excuse me. Each year, there's been a review of the census data going back for at least the past 53 years. In the past, we've used census workers to go door to door to find out which little kiddos, as Mr. Kravman used, are in Lancaster. The last few years, we've used census cards to collect that information and so far, we've found that to be quite successful. Additionally, each year, there's been a board of ed presentation regarding the enrollment projections for next year as we're trying to, at this point, look ahead, which is hard to believe, but look ahead to next year and, and make projections as they relate to staffing and programming. So a little bit of a, a background and current status of where we are. If you've been anywhere around Lancaster recently, you'll noticed new and expanding neighborhoods all around the, the corners of Lancaster, if you will. So it's an interesting time to be in Lancaster. The faculty, staff, administrators, students, parents and the community have truly made Lancaster, as Dr. Valli has said in the past, a destination district. Because of that, several years ago, you, you may recall, and many of you are on the board, that the Board of Education commissioned a study to be conducted by the SES team. So before we look ahead to the projections, we'll do a little looking back. The SES study team conducted a two-year study that concluded last spring, 2018. Looking at the question, are there options that might provide more cost-effective ways or patterns to organize how the pre-kindergarten through 12 program is implemented and delivered over the next three years or so? Once again, you'll recall that there are multiple discussions, multiple presentations and several opportunities for the community to have some enrollment or some involvement. One small portion of that study, which was a very comprehensive study looking at that question, dealt with projections. So as we're looking ahead, we're also going to use some of their numbers to compare to some extent. So they made three different projections based on some variables that included live births, kindergarten enrollment as it's been trending or as the trends have been, along with differing timeframes. And they had three projections, low, mid and high. To some extent, those names are misleading because they do not represent low, medium and high necessarily. So those three projections were 1,650 for grades kindergarten through grade third grade. Likewise, the mid-projection was 1,699 and the high-projection was 1,681 students. So one, there's an example of where mid does not represent mid. The district also has, for the past 53 years or so, conducted projec-, or conducted enrollment projections. And our registrar, in concert with, with our office, put the projection at 1,699 for this current school year, which is very close and within the range of what the SES study team put together between 1,650 and 1,699. The actual official beginning enrollment for this current year was 1,698 students. So you'll see that that's all right in that, that, that frame. And this is one thing that the SES study did out of, as you remember, a whole comprehensive look at that research question. So just looking back before we look ahead. For some more context, as we, as our district projections have gone forward, the official beginning enrollment for this current year was 456 students, the projected was 458 last year. Two years ago, in 1718, the official beginning enrollment was 443, the projected was 431. And in 1617, the official beginning enrollment was 372 for kindergarten and the projected enrollment was 352. I can give you more data in terms of several more years of where kindergarten was official beginning versus the projected, but the purpose of illustrating those numbers is that in large part, we're, we've been pretty close, although it's a, a somewhat murky process at this time of year, it's tough to predict because we're predicting, quite honestly, on students that are not even in the district at this point, kids who haven't moved into the district and things of that nature. As the spring moves forward, the picture becomes much more clear. In March, we have kindergarten registration. In May and June, we have kindergarten screening across the district. And then in summer, there's some additional movement. So as we get closer and closer to next year, goes without saying, it gets a little bit more clear. So the actual data, census data enrollment projections. From 2018, so looking at last summer's census data compared to 2017, preschool students as defined by students who are not yet in school, so birth to roughly four years old, we've seen a decrease by 119 students at the end of December. So here's an example of where these numbers become more clear as we move forward. At the end of January, and the numbers I'm presenting to you are the numbers from the end of December from the, the census data. But since that point, 25 more students have come into the district, have been, who have been accounted for through the census registration process and whatnot. So now it's a decrease of 94 students. So just an example of how things will continue to get more and more clear going forward, especially with the, the kindergarten projections. K-12, between 2018 and 2017, there's been a decrease in, of five students, non-public student enrollment. The in-district students, students who live in district and attend in-district, non-public schools increased by 12 from 291 to 303. Those students who live in district, who go to outside district placements decreased by 26. Enrollment projections, comparison with the official beginning enrollment from this past September with projected enrollment for next school year. Kindergarten, we're looking at official beginning enrollment of 456 right now, this, this past September, to next year, a decrease of 30 students. Grades 1 through 3, we're looking next year at an increase of 54 students. Grades 4 through 6, an increase of 25 students. Grade 7 through 8, an increase of 19 students. Grades 9 through 12, a decrease of 28 students. Overall, grades K through 12, we're looking at an increase of 40 students. The data, some additional information that is of interest and I think in some ways shows some trends that we have in Lancaster. This year's senior class of 452 students began as a cohort of 415 students in 2006. That is not uncommon. As our students go through the, the system, we have typically gained students along the way from kindergarten through graduation. Projected enrollment for 2018-19 was 18 more than the official beginning enrollment in September of 18. So that meaning last year, the projected number was 5,627, the official beginning enrollment was 18 less than that. Another interesting trend here that I came across recently, in, in the past, so 1969 through 1989, there was always a decrease of students from September through June. So during the school year, every year for 20, 21 years, we lost students. The next 20 years or so, from 1990 to 2010, six of those years, there was an increase in students from where we started in September to where we ended in June. In the last eight years since 2011 through the present, six of the eight years, we've had an increase, including the last five straight years, and this year, we're up 22 students at this point. So why share that with you? Once again, it highlights the work that our, our teachers, our administrators, our parents, our students, the staff, the community that Lancaster is doing and, and it shows us that we certainly are a destination, destination district. Enrollment, this is, in a lot of ways, the trends that we see and where we currently are, are fantastic things for the district as a whole. So what, what next? Some next steps. We will continue to monitor the data as I illustrated with the change in a month already in some of the data. As we get closer and closer to next school year, that being specifically, there's less movement in grades 1 through 12 than there is in kindergarten at this point. So as, once again, March registration, May and June screening, and the picture will get more and more clear, hopefully as we, we move forward. So are there questions for me at this point? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kufo. So I think, I mean, I, one comment, I think that presentation highlights the history of Lancaster, but also the future. And when I talk to Dr. Valli about these issues of, of growing enrollment and being a destination school district, we like to categorize these issues as good problems to have. So we'll confront these issues as they come and try to have vision to look ahead and plan for these, these numbers. But again, all good things and all a, a good reflex upon what we do here at Lancaster. Moving on to 5.0 correspondence, anyone from the board of any correspondence that they received they'd like to speak of? 6.0 approval of minutes.
I got this amazing Valentine.
Yes, I got one too. Thank you for... Everyone else receive the Valentine that they'd like to acknowledge? That was again, very nice. 6.0 approval of minutes. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from January 7, 2019? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. 6.2, could I have a motion to accept the budget work session minutes from January 28, 2019? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? So moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
I just wanted to keep an eye on this for this week and thank the board education, Dr. Valli, all the administrators and district officers, fans, and staff, everybody that works here in Lancaster, and thank you for all you have to do in a daily basis to help this little place where students can go, they can feel safe, they can learn, they can go. So thank you for working with us to make work.
Well said, Mrs. Anack. Thank you. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
I don't think I'd say anything, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just appreciating. I'd also like to thank the establishment and the community, we have numbers to assist all in this area, and we look forward to partnering with the district to create a curriculum that truly does the rest of these issues and provides support for the initiative.
Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, 8.0 is board reports. Anyone from the board have anything they'd like to report on?
I just wanted to say, I know a lot of us were there over the weekend. I attended the middle school musical yesterday and it was phenomenal. That, the kid that played the lead in James and the Giant Peach could be in a Disney movie. So if you didn't see it and you can get your hands on a recording, you should, you should watch it, it was amazing. So I know, I saw a lot of, a lot of the board there and a lot of administrators there, so I'm, I'm glad to see everybody attending. It was great. Looking forward to this weekend's high school musical.
Thank you, Mrs. Tetcher. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to 9.0, superintendent's administrative report. Dr. Valli?
Yeah, a couple of things. Storm damage, little update. We weathered the storm well, but we didn't make it through the cold temperatures or the thaw unscathed. I see Mrs. Muller in there smiling a little bit. We had a pipe burst here at Hillview affecting classrooms 2 and 3. In both cases, cold negative temperatures blowing through vents caught the pipes the wrong way and they burst and created some damage. But I'd like to say that an insurance claim has been filed and I'd like to thank our buildings and grounds. Mr. Binyarsky's here tonight, thank you for all that they do for cleaning and repairing and all the effort remedying these spaces. Also, thank you Jamie Phillips for filing all the paperwork and the insurance claims and all that kind of stuff. Also to, you know, file the paperwork for the replacement of supplies and furniture that was damaged in these two rooms. Just like your house, things happen, but I'm very pleased with the collective effort and everyone involved to work together to fix these things when they do happen. So thank you very much. Wanted to jump down to the Black Box Theater. As many of you know and have seen, if you've been in the high school at all, we put walls around the Black Box Theater, what used to be the old job of gym, and they're working on that. Like every phase of construction, it's not without its bumps and surprises. Sort of an interesting thing, they found a letterman's jacket inside the interior of the wall of one of the walls that was taken down to create the Black Box Theater. And Mr. Jenkowitz knew the story of the gentleman or the young man who lost his letterman jacket in that year. So over 50-some years later, that was returned to him. He was, he's not living in New York State, but they sent it to him. And it's a pretty funny story, actually. But, so it's a little dusty and it has some wear and, you know, whatever, rot and other things else, but, you know, it was a pretty good story and some other things as well. But on a serious note, I'm happy to report that things are going well with this construction. Thanks again to the Buffalo Construction, Young and Right Architects and our whole OACM, as we call it, our team at the DO that works on these things and the construction. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valli. Moving on to 10.0, old business. Anyone from the board of any old business they'd like to discuss? 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1, could I have a motion to accept a tenure recommendation, which we will highlight at a future meeting? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? So moved. 11.1.2, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? So moved. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Education's report? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Education's report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed? So moved. 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items as written?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? So moved. Not so much enthusiasm, Mr. Jackson. 12.2, policy adoption 5413 procurement, uniform grant guidance for federal awards. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? So moved. 12.3, policy adoption 7133, educations of students in foster care. Could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? So moved. 12.4 and 12.5, our first policy readings for information only. They're 5741 drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers and 7530 child abuse and maltreatment. 12.6 and 12.7 are contracts as part of our health and welfare services with East Aurora Central School District and Frontier Central School District. Could I have a motion to accept those contracts? Any questions or comments?
I actually have one quick question.
Yeah?
With regard to the East Aurora contract, I think there's a typo on it. It says the town of Hamburg as the... It says the Town of Hamburg as the receiving town. Looked like there was a couple of changes in the number of students that says children residing in said school district, Town of Hamburg.
Can you point out where it is?
Sorry, it's the third paragraph.
Is that it? Isn't that spelled right? We will check into that and make sure that it's either corrected or that it isn't inaccurate. And what I would say is that, does anyone know offhand, does East Aurora border Hamburg?
No.
Is that possible? Okay, then it's incorrect. Okay, so we'll fix it.
Yeah, well, that's...
Sorry, I'm not up on my Western New York geography. You will fix it. Thank you.
So what's the process there? Do we have to put it back up again after the change, or can we approve it and then with the anticipated changes?
Let's change it, get it right, and do it again.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, so we'll vote on 12.7, which is the contract with Frontier Central School District. Any questions or comments on that contract? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So moved. So we're going to table 12.6 for this meeting and follow up at a future meeting. 12.8 is a contract with Sarah Meredith. She's an accompanist who works with our music department in different capacities. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.9 is a contract with Ms. Diane Sullivan, working in the same capacity. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.10, 12.11, and 12.12 are contracts with Gary P. Gilroy Publications, Michael McIntosh, and Nix Design. And I see that Mr. Seymour is here. Welcome, Mr. Seymour. I had reached out to him, and since he is the leader of the marching band, or one of our music leaders, and asked him if he could give us a couple, just some background information
A couple of years ago, we had to look out of district to look for a new design team. In that process, we found it to be a very challenging one, because finding someone local is not something that, I guess you'd say the marching arts aren't as widespread in Western New York as they are in some other regions of the country. So with the in-house designers that we had, we very ignorantly were paying a very small amount of money for something that, after much research, typically requires a lot more. And so as we were looking for different designers, we had three gentlemen that we were working with over the last two seasons. However, this year, we decided to part ways with three of the four that we were working with last season, specifically because we were looking at their timeframe, delivery of the product that we are purchasing, and then also the cost itself. So this year, we have a new design team. Michael McIntosh is the one individual that you see on your list that we did retain. The other individuals are, Mr. Martin works with GPG Music, and he is the person that is composing and writing our show for the marching band season. And Kevin Nix is going to be designing, artistically designing, not only the show on the field, but props, costumes, color guard work, choreography, things as such. So in that process, we have saved what we were asking from last year, $5,000. And we're, long-term goal for us is really to become as self-sufficient as possible with regard to design team choices, because it's something that we realize is not going to change in the future. It's not like we're going to find a magic designer or a team who will work for a small amount of money. So we now realize in this new, in this new reality that we live here in the Lancaster marching band, that we need to be as self-sufficient as possible. So that's our long-term goals. And then utilizing the marching boosters with our amazing support and incredible help, and also using their help to aid in this process as well.
Okay. Mr. Seymour, it's always good to see you, sir.
It's great to see you.
And thank you for that information, because I think, I mean, it helps for us to hear it, but for the community here as well. You know, if they're like me, they sit in the audience and see the marching band, or they see a musical, or see any musical production, and I think to myself, how do we do this? How do we get this done? Right? And while you said, we try to be self-sufficient, sometimes we have to bring in outside professionals, but that's not to say that, you know, in the future, we can't be more self-sufficient and do those things in-house. But until that time, we're glad to support you in all of your work, and again, I appreciate the information.
I want to say, on behalf of the marching band and many of my colleagues, I want to thank you for your continued support for the arts. It is extremely evident in everything that we do, and you were speaking of the musical last night, and yeah, I was feeling all of those same things, just beaming with pride and respect for all of our kids. So thank you so much for the continued support. It means the world to us.
Thank you. And so with that, I'd like to put those three contracts together unless anyone has an objection to that. Could I have a motion to accept 12.10, 12.11, and 12.12?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.13 is a contract with OccuStar Workplace Compliance LLC, and this is the company that does our physicals and testing, and this is simply not a new contract, but just a change of name for this company. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.14 is a contract with Buffalo Construction Consultants. This moves us ahead into the next phase of our capital project. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.15 is a contract with the Town of Lancaster, and this is our SRO agreement for our third SRO, which will be coming to the district, which I think is an accomplishment in itself in that the town and the school district can work so closely together to try to ensure the safety of our students and teachers. Could I have a motion to accept that contract?
So moved.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.16 is the surplus equipment report. Could I have a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.17, the food service operating reports for December 2018. Could I have a motion to accept that report?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.18 is everyone's BOSI's call for nominations. You may have received some correspondence in the mail regarding the applications of Ray Carr, Andrew Loeb, and Mary Buss from different districts who are incumbents on the BOSI's Board. We can nominate one, two, or all three if we'd like. Does anyone have a preference or any comments on who they'd like, whom they'd like to nominate? Does anyone have an objection to nominating all three?
No.
Okay. Could I have a motion to nominate Ray Carr, Andrew Loeb, and Mary Buss?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.19 through 12.24, we'll go through them individually, but this is the time where we acknowledge the many important people from all of our bargaining units who work very diligently for the welfare academically, socially, mentally of the children that we have here in our district. And I think moving forward with contract extensions really removes something that was relevant and prevalent when I first got on the Board. And in talking about this agenda and these agreements with Dr. Valley, I said that I think one of the most important things in education is to work for the benefit of students, of teachers, of the community. And if we can continue on and just extend the agreements that we have with our bargaining units and find some middle ground via compromise, collaboration, discussion, and get all of those factors that really can be a hindrance to moving forward out of the way, I think that's what our community cares about, and they welcome what I refer to as labor peace. Because when I came on the Board, there was labor strife, and whether you work in a district or you are the parent of a child in a district, you don't want back-and-forth disagreements amongst adults to get in the way of education. So I think this speaks volumes for the expert, not only the expertise of our professionals in all the bargaining units, but the professionalism and the principal-centered nature that they take with respect to their work and with the respect to working with our district, the administrative, Dr. Valley and his administrative team, the Board of Education, and everyone that they come into contact with every single day. So let's move on and mention these specifically, and I welcome any comments from the Board as well. 12.19 is the retirement incentive for the Lancaster Central Teachers Association. Could I have a motion to accept that retirement incentive?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.20 is the Lancaster Central Teachers Association Extension Agreement. Could I have a motion to accept that extension agreement?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'd like to thank from the LCTA, Don Kirsch and Mike Shaw for all of their work, as well as your executive team as well, Mr. Kirsch, in working with Dr. Valley, and again, moving us forward, coming to compromise, because I know as a teacher and as an education professional, you want to be acknowledged for the work that you do and the expertise that you bring to the table and to our district, while in turn, being able to take care of your family and being justly compensated, comparatively speaking, as an educator. So thank you for your diligent work. With that, I'd like to call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.21 is the Association Extension Agreement with the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association. Could I have a motion to accept that extension agreement?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? With last, I'd like to thank Terry Adamac, as always, and Cesar Marchioli, and hello, Mrs. Marsonelli and Mrs. Muller. Thank you for all that you do, and I'm sure you're communicating with your members, and you work together as a team to compromise and collaborate with the district as well. So thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.22 is the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers Contract Extension. Could I have a motion to accept that contract extension?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. From LAST, from last, I'd like to thank Marge Myers and acknowledge her diligent work as well as Marge here this evening.
No, she's on vacation.
Good for her. 12.23 is the, did we vote on that?
Twenty.
Did we vote on?
Twenty.
Twenty-two. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.23 is the retirement incentive for the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel. Could I have a motion to accept that retirement incentive?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.24 is a retirement incentive for confidential employees. Could I have a motion to accept that retirement incentive?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 13.0, Public Hearing. And we have no one signed up to speak for this evening. 14.0, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Future meetings, we have, on February 25, we have a Budget Work Session at Central Avenue School Building, 6:30. And then our next regular session meeting will be March 18, 2018, at Central Avenue School Building at 7:00 PM. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone.